I'd like to start this June 21 meeting of the City Commission. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Arpke. Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open the meeting up for the Citizens' Open Forum. If there's anyone from the community who would like to stand up and talk about anything that is not on today's agenda, we'd welcome you to come forward. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 14, 2010. Item 6.2, approve the purchase of fire hydrants for water distribution, project number 10-2834, from Water Products Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $37,390. Item 6.3, authorize purchase of a rotary sewer compressor from Air Capital Equipment, in an amount not to exceed $10,846. Item 6.4, award of contract for the conductor-induct installation for South Ohio Street Lighting, project number 03-1402, to Mid-Kansas Underground Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $25,335.
Is there any particular item that a Commissioner would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, accept a motion.
Mayor, may we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to development business.
Item 7.1, acceptance of offered easement and flood control right-of-way dedications shown on the proposed final plat of the SSB addition.
Mr. Andrew.
Oh, he's not here.
Okay.
Nope, there he is.
Apologize, we're helping a citizen upstairs.
No problem.
This is the application that's filed by Mike Scanlon and Johnny Kim, and they're requesting the rezoning of the property most people are familiar with as the former Moose Lodge. And I believe we have a chronology for that, don't we Dustin? But the property was originally purchased and annexed into the city in 1957. In 1959, the building on the property was built, and the lodge was relocated from South Broadway. The city's line of purchase flood control right-of-way in 1961, which took off a good chunk of the west portion of the property. There was action that approved a private club for liquor sales and consumption in 1969, an addition in '75. And then since 1977, the property's been zoned residential suburban. And the property ceased operations as the Moose Lodge, and once it closed its doors and had been abandoned for 12 months, it had lost its grandfather status. So that meant that any new use proposed either had to conform to that zoning or request appropriate zoning for the use. These applicants purchased the property at auction and want to restore it back to its previous use as a entertainment venue primarily for leasing out for wedding receptions and things of that nature. And this is a drawing that indicates the current improvements on the property. This is Beverly Drive. The city's flood control levee's over here. There are drainage channels over here that carry water back over to the levee. This is a parking area here, and there's two driveways there and there. There is a manufactured home park directly to the south, and there is commercial zoning south of it. One question, does the RS zoning really fit the property? The applicants believe that they can't put this property into productive use under the current RS zoning, and that would basically limit it to a single-family residence only and large lot development. And so they believe that the C5 zoning is more consistent with how the property's been historically used. And there's a property right here that's zoned C5 and has been for about the past 15 years that they believe this would be consistent with. If you're familiar with the neighborhood, it has a mix of uses. Farther back on Beverly Drive is a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential uses. And then you have the mobile home parks across the street. And then south of that, along Crawford, is intense commercial. North of this site is the Peony Patch Gardens. And that is agricultural, but also has some commercial activity there as well and visitors coming and going from the site. As far as the Moose Lodge itself, it has connections to city water and sewer and adequate fire protection. There are drainage facilities on all sides of the property that carry water west to Dry Creek. Beverly is a through street. You can get from Broadway to Crawford, but it's not a heavily traveled one. And primarily, yes Dustin, if you scan and show what Beverly Drive going through that park looks like, but the fact that you have to wind through this mobile home park here to get from Crawford to Broadway or back means it's not much used as a cut-through or shortcut. The city staff, to our knowledge, hasn't received very many complaints either about traffic volumes or speed on the property. The current comprehensive plan shows this is public, quasi-public, based on its use as a fraternal organization. And the proposed land use designation on the Gould-Evans Plan was suburban residential. Again, that doesn't match up with the historic use of the property. The Planning Commission looked at this and conducted a hearing on June 1. Following their staff report, public comments, and their discussion, they recommended that the property be rezoned to Plan C5 rather than an open C5, and that uses be limited to a banquet hall only, and that no other C5 uses be permitted, and that this be done subject to satisfactory plating of the property. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions about the property or the Planning Commission's recommendation. But again, under their recommendation, the only thing the property could be used for of a commercial nature would be its historic use. And if that ceased, then somebody else would have to come in and propose something new. You couldn't just abandon this and have another commercial use pop up.
If we were to make a motion on this, we'd need to specify Plan C5 and not just read it as listed, is that correct?
That is correct. The ordinance that you have attached references the term Plan C5, and the ordinance itself reads that uses on this property shall be limited to a banquet hall and entertainment venue, and that would be the only approved use.
And as a point of order, Mr. Andrew or Mr. Binkston, is it okay that we go ahead and take care of items 7.2 before 7.1?
Works from my standpoint, I don't know, Mr. Andrew, if you have any considerations related to the...
Yeah, the only requirement is that before second reading or final action on any zoning change, the property would have to have an approved plat. So if you'd like to discuss the plat first, that would be appropriate in this case, and then vote on them in the opposite order.
Why don't we go ahead and do that then?
Okay. Well, as this property, since it came into the city in 1957, has never been platted, it's a precondition that if you wish to rezone a property to a more intense use, then that property has to be platted or subdivided. And this property has never had an official plat that designated its boundaries and what land area went with the property, especially since the acquisitions that occurred with the flood control right-of-way. So the applicants have retained a surveyor, and they have submitted a one-lot plat. It contains three acres, and it's a plat of existing conditions. There's no boundary changes proposed except for we have some discussion about a possible boundary change over here on the west side. And in confirming with the applicant surveyor and our own city surveyor, we've had maps and records that show this road that you can see much more clearly on an aerial photo. The belief that that was part of the city's flood control levee and levee system. The city has treated that road as its own, and it's there to provide access for maintenance of the flood control levee. This is also the only access back to the Peony Patch property because it is landlocked. And so you can see this line here that would lead you to believe that the road is outside the bounds of the property, but survey shows that it is inside the bounds of the property. And we've had discussions with the applicant of moving that line, essentially taking this easement and making it flood control right-of-way. That would move the property line from here to here. And the result of that would be the city would be the owner and maintainer of that road, which we are or have been taking care of it currently. So that would be the only boundary change with the property. And then we identified that right down here, even with that easement, there's parts of this road that comes out of there and comes across that. So what you would have is basically a dedication that would start here and go along that line and dedicate that west portion to the city of Salina for ownership and control. I think that is the primary surveying item that needs to be addressed that would reduce the size of the parcel slightly and reduce, change the setback in property line on the west, but wouldn't have any implications for the owner. Otherwise, it would clarify that that's our road, and we would be owning, maintaining that, and controlling access to it. So the plat was reviewed by the Planning Commission. There were some easements shown on the drawing that aren't identified as to whether they're utility drainage or otherwise. Those need to be clarified. And then the 20-foot easement is identified as being adjusted here to make sure all the road was included in it. And then there's the question of whether the strip along the west should be right-of-way owned by the city or easement retained by the Moose Lodge owners. So you have in your packets there a copy of an agreement that was done in 2004, and that was done between the city of Salina and Mr. Retley that owns the Peony Patch. And that was just in there to guarantee his ability to access his property across this road here, which had never been formalized. But that is the only way into the Peony Patch property, which is landlocked without that access. So I think with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the plat.
Any questions, Mr. Andrew, on item 7.1? Thank you.
Thanks. And again, that would be, we've discussed that with the owners. They're agreeable to dedicating that strip to the city on the west. They just wanted to confirm that that wouldn't impact them in any way. And we reviewed that with the building official. And changing the line from 30 feet to 10 feet doesn't really change their building or ability to add because it's all right-of-way to the west. And so the setback, it actually has more like a 300-foot setback before you get to any private property on the west side. So it's not a detriment at all to this property or to the owners to turn that over to the city.
Thanks. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move we accept the offered easement and flood control right-of-way dedication shown on the proposed final plat of the SSB addition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the offered easement and right-of-way dedication shown previously. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Since we've already heard about item 7.2, does the Commissioner have any questions for Mr. Andrew regarding this ordinance?
I just wanted to confirm, the only thing that struck me was that the change in zoning does not conform with the comprehensive plan, and that our minutes from the Planning Commission shows absolutely no discussion on that. I just want to confirm that the Planning Commission knew at the time of their meeting that the change in zoning doesn't conform.
One of the items that is remaining before a updated comprehensive plan can come back to you for consideration is the 14 areas or 14 properties that were discussed with you at a study session that basically the future land use designation conflicts with what the property's either currently used for or what it's currently zoned for. And the Planning Commission is going to take that up at its next meeting and refer a recommendation to you. But the question becomes, not so much in this case, but in other cases, in order to, the choices are to modify the plan to maintain the current pattern or to change the underlying zoning, downzoning the property. So in this case, that plan has not been formally adopted. It shows it as suburban residential, but it's already non-conforming from a zoning standpoint. So the Planning Commission's going to discuss not just this property, but the 13 others. Are you prepared, as a Planning Commission, as a governing body, to downzone properties? And the way that would work, and it would work in this case, is if you're really serious that the future use of this property should be suburban residential, then this change should not be approved, and the property should await someone to come along who has a plan for using it on a residential basis. And there's about 13 other locations in the city where the consultant-prepared land use plan conflicts with what property is used for today. And so the reason that that wasn't discussed in detail there was that they know that at their next meeting, they're going to have to discuss it on a broader scale, a philosophical scale, to say, are we prepared to make more than this property non-conforming? And then when the opportunity comes up, are we going to say no? We'll wait till there's a use that comes along that conforms? And so this is already a non-conforming use and has been, and that's why it's in front of you today because the time limit up on its grandfathering has occurred. And so your choice today is to say, no, the historic use is acceptable for the future, or to say, this is a property that needs to change. And you are correct that it was not discussed, but they were aware of the fact of that conflict. And they said it's this and 13 other properties where that will be the case, where the properties could potentially be zoned down from commercial or some other designation to residential if the long-term vision is that, is residential. So if the long-term vision here is, in fact, for residential, then this change would be in conflict with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner, just a quick comment. That what Dean's saying is correct, but when you're making a decision, you probably want to keep that in line with the current comprehensive plan that you have because that's the one that's in place right now. Certainly have a lot of discretion with zoning actions. So you do have a lot of places you could go with that. But if you refer back to your reasoning behind that, and the comprehensive plan is one of them, you'd want to refer to the current one that's adopted versus the future. Because as you mentioned, there are just a handful of properties, about 13, that the future one would call to question whether you might want to change that or not. But this does seem to be a pretty consistent use with the current plan and with the use that's there, that has always been there.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Bring us back to the Commission. I might remind any Commissioner who may be interested in making a motion on this that if they want to see this use for this building as a specified use, we might want to incorporate Plan C5 into a motion. If not, then that's okay too.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1010-551, approving the application Z10-05 for a planned C5 commercial service district on the former Moose Lodge property at 1700 Beverly Drive, allowing it to continue to be used as a banquet hall and commercial entertainment venue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 10-10551, specifying this as a Plan C5 district. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to administration.
Item 8.1, authorize the submittal of the 2010 JAG program grant application and the acquisition of four WatchGuard brand digital mobile cameras.
Chief Hill.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. The JAG grant, or Justice Assistant Grant before you, is, you'll recall, is basically the same grant that we received last year, FY09, federal fiscal year. This is the 10 application. And last year, if you'll recall, we purchased the crime scene van, and we purchased some mobile video cameras with that. This year, we've been awarded $24,457 in funding. Also, if you'll recall, the less you get in this grant, the better because the formula is based on Part I violent crime. So the fewer murders, rapes, robberies, and aggravated assaults we have, which is good, we get less money. So this is one of those grants where less is actually more for your community. We are a certified disparate jurisdiction with the county because the county has neither the population base nor the violent crime base to receive a direct grant award. So we would share of the $24,457, we would share $3,905 with the county. And Sheriff Kocanowski will be meeting with the County Commission tomorrow to secure some equipment that they otherwise might not be able to afford. Again, this year, we would ask you to designate digital mobile patrol cameras as the program purpose for which the JAG funds will be used. And we would acquire those based on the state of Kansas bid. Our recommendation is that you authorize the submittal of the JAG program grant application as presented, and the acquisition of the four digital mobile cameras based on the state of Kansas bid. And I'd be happy to try to address any questions you might have.
Questions, Chief Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move that we authorize the submittal of the JAG program grant application as presented and the acquisition of four WatchGuard brand digital mobile cameras based on the state of Kansas bid price.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the JAG program grant application and an equipment acquisition as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero.
Item 8.2, approval of requests for the capital equipment and facility modifications to Phillips Lighting.
Mr. Gage.
Mayor and Commissioners, Phillips Lighting, one of the city's largest employers and what I believe one of the most efficient employers in the world, is looking at vying for three possible projects at their Salina plant. Together, these projects could bring to the city up to an estimated 22 jobs and $3.2 million in capital facility investment. The first project is estimated to bring about five manufacturing jobs. It adds an additional draw line to a glass furnace and helps them to make more of their own glass. The second deals with relocating a testing laboratory and would result in up to eight additional positions. And the third has to do with an overall consolidation process that improves efficiency and effectiveness and is estimated to add up to nine positions. The wage levels for these jobs is $22.60 per hour, up to about $24.29 per hour plus benefits. The total estimated payroll would be about $1.1 million. They have asked the city to consider a $150,000 SEDIC economic development grant from the city. Specifically, the grant would be used to pay for the purchase, delivery, and installation of equipment necessary to modify the existing manufacturing process, the electrical and building upgrades, and construction of the fully-equipped laboratory and related facility modifications. From a grant performance perspective, we'd look at each of the projects independently based on the related number of jobs to each project. We kind of ran the typical routine, which means to provide you with a benefit cost analysis from Wichita State University using the Wichita State model. This is a 1.34. Anything over 1 means we're bringing benefit to our community. We felt this was a pretty easy one, but we wanted to run the model for you. If authorized, requests would be funded from the economic development allocation of the city's sales tax account, and we've attached the balance, and the balance is healthy, and there's no question with the ability to fund this. We do think it would help us move forward with Goal 3 of your strategic plan, which is to create a community of quality mixed-use development and redevelopment, and certainly good jobs like this, and ability to help these types of businesses in our community grow will help us with that. A couple alternatives for you. I will say first, the SEDIC committee that reviews this did unanimously recommend approval for this project. Our two recommendations are pretty obvious. One would be to approve the request to commit funding for capital equipment and facility modifications to Phillips Lighting in the amount not to exceed $150,000. The other would be to deny that. We've included all the information we think we can in an open forum. There are aspects of this that would fall under what we call trade secrets, which if you do have questions about anything that would fall under that, that would be under the executive session privilege. And you could certainly, if we get to that point in your questioning, could recommend that you make a motion, go into executive session for whatever time you might need if you wanted to discuss anything that's trade secret related. With that in mind, the staff does recommend Alternative 1, and we do have representative from Phillips Lighting and also the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce here to help answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions of staff or anyone from Phillips?
Fairly easy question, I think. Because it's presented as three separate projects, this request has all three tied together, and there's no variable action should one of the projects not be completed...
And there's no variable action should one of the projects not be completed, but two are. This is an all or none, the way it, it seems to be proposed. Is that correct?
Well, the way it is, is we're asking for all three together. But let's say that, again, two were moved forward, they were able to do two, but not the third. This would be set up that we could address the two and not the third in proportionately. Now, at any time, if, say Phillips says, well, we're going to be able to do a lot more with a project or do something different with a project, they could always come back and we could amend this as well. So we think we have full flexibility for you.
Okay, that, that brings up probably then the only one concern is that I'm sure we have a range of salary and just looking at some of the different positions, there are some I'm sure that are weighted higher than others. Is any one project here, if only one would happen, below our one rating? Could, in other words, could we approve one out of, have one out of the three happen and it actually be a cost burden?
Yeah. I don't think so because we pre-rated it based on the actual number of employees. But when we look at those, you'd have to look at the actual cost of each project, Commissioner. I don't know if I have that broken down right here. I don't believe I do. I'd have to take a look at that. I can't tell you for sure because without question, the, on the benefit side of the ratio, obviously it's going to relate to the employment and the wages. And as I think you're thinking on the cost side, that could be different than that. I'd have to actually go back and look at that to see for sure. It's a possibility it could, but I don't know that for sure. Might ask too, Aaron White with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce is here. And I don't know, Aaron, if you have that information to at least address the question somewhat generally?
Aaron White with Salina Chamber. We had been using weighted average of the price range in terms of established cost analysis, but the number of jobs are available statistically, the higher-blower rate could be insignificant based on the number of jobs. If this was a large project that said it was 100 jobs, it would be something to consider. But with the number of jobs we're talking about statistically, it would make a little difference in the cost.
Okay. So like the five manufacturing position jobs, those are $22 or higher an hour jobs. They're not the $8 an hour jobs that if just that one happened, then it would, it would bring it down. Okay, great. Thank you.
Dan, could you come up here for just a second? I was just curious if you could just briefly speak to how well you think Phillips and Salina is positioned?
Yeah. Some of the global changes we've just, we've just basically progressed through have been pretty significant. When you take a look at Phillips, in the local area, of course, opened as Westinghouse in 1967. And Phillips bought the Westinghouse name and the facilities in 1983. So, you know, we've been in the local area for, you know, the 27 years as Phillips and the years previous that as Westinghouse. The major change that we've made in the last 12 to 18 months is we're, we've basically followed a global model now. We're part of what we call a global business unit, where all of the TL facilities, all the tubular lighting fluorescent facilities are all part of one global business now. So as of in the past, we used to compete against facilities in North America. Now we compete against facilities across the globe. So we are in direct competition with China, you know, with all the different TL facilities. We had, there was 23 TL facilities 18 months ago. As we stand here today, there are 11. And the model is to get down to five globally for Phillips. These three projects are significant enablers, if you will, for us to be one of those five. So it's very important that when we take a look at the, our sustainability or when you take a look at projects that are enablers for us to be more competitive, we take a look at these type of projects. And the majority of these projects, one is a direct project on manufacturing, the other two are more in the support area. That also makes us more competitive on what we currently produce. So these projects are all three independent projects. There isn't any two projects or any, any of these individual projects that actually tie together. They are three individual projects and standalone.
Mr. Mandeasina, if we vote on this or approve this, then I understand, are you bidding on this to happen in Salina?
Correct.
And, excuse me, just since I have that correct, how, who are we bidding with? What other cities, I shouldn't say what other cities, what, what is the, if there's a lot of people that are also bidding for this, do we stand a better chance than them? Or are we like, are you trying to bid with three other, 32 other communities that are also trying to get this, these type of projects to where the current plans are?
No, basically, the way Phillips is looking is they're only looking to their internal facility. So the 11 TL factories, there's actually only three sites that are competing for two of these jobs. And on the third project, we're one of two. So basically, it's, it's down to two or three that we're competing with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from the commission? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the commission.
Mayor, I move that we approve the requests for the capital equipment and facility modifications to Phillips Lighting in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve the request to commit funding for capital equipment and facility modifications to Phillips Lighting in an amount not to exceed $150,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at 4:57 PM.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we recess into executive session for 20 minutes, did you say?
Yes.
Do you expect any action?
No, we do not.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. We are in executive session.